Well, welcome. It's that time of year. We're going through our special town meeting. Our annual town meeting was May where we did our budgets and the ongoing expenses. Tonight, we're gonna go through forty-one articles that talk about special capital items and other items that we fund through free cash and other means. One thing tonight, there are a number of labor contracts that have not been negotiated. Chris, you want to explain our procedure?
Yeah, in the past, it's always been the policy of the Finance Committee as well as the rest of the financial team that when discussing anything to do with contracts, we try not to essentially show our cards so we don't set a dollar amount for any contract negotiations. Simply setting a number almost sets the expectation that that would be the raise, that that would be, so pretty much takes our
Any leverage.
Negotiation out of our hands. So at this point, the negotiation's done between the arbitrator and the union. When it does come to a point in which they do come to an agreement on that, we are always committed to fund the agreement between the union and the town, both for retroactive pay and obviously for pay going forward. So that's why in these particular articles, there is no number because the negotiations have not completed yet.
So Article Number One, ADA $150,000.
Yeah, I think this is every single year type of article. It's $150,000 and really around the town, we're doing things to make the town more accessible and in compliance with ADA. And the money, if I recall right, is really kind of split between several departments. You know, there's parks and schools and general government working away around town. And we've been doing this year after year on a program.
And that's where we started and we just keep going. And that way, Rick Valani manages the $150,000 every year and it makes it tolerable. So you're not getting hit with half a million or $600,000 in one year. Article Number Two is one of the contracts for the dispatchers. So we'll wait to see where that ends up and then fund it. Article Three, TSS Realty.
This particular article, in the past, we've referred to sponsor. We have been asked to give an opinion on each article. In this particular article, it's a very small piece of land that needs to change hands.
Have an easement.
Yeah, an easement, yeah. On Beaver Street. So that changing the hands for the easement is a very small part, like I said, on Beaver Street. It didn't affect anything to do with the town whatsoever financially, but because of the new policy in town, we voted favorable on this.
I mean, the good news is we're giving the owner an easement so that he can develop the land. When he develops it, we'll get some money for it. Article Four. I wonder who wants to talk about Article Four?
Would you like me to talk about Article Four? So yeah, obviously, it's a big ask from the school committee, but it's warranted based on our enrollment trends. And our enrollment trends are, have been increasing over the last few years. You know, we're, what was, you know, ten years ago, around 4,200 students, we're now at 4,600, approaching 4,600 students. So simply, we are out of space. You know, the factory is growing and we've got more and more factory workers that need space, right? So, and those factory workers are our students. So we are looking to add on six classroom spaces to the Brookside Elementary School. It would be an addition, you know, as we want to ensure people that this isn't a modular kind of build that comes in on a trailer and you take the wheels off and it's gonna be there for a few years and it's gonna be leaking and having problems with its infrastructure. These are, you know, custom-built units that are built off-site. They're brought in on a trailer, but they're hoisted in place on a foundation and they're tied into the school, you know, with all the mechanicals and electrical side of it. So again, it is something that the school department is requesting for space to, you know, just enhance the, you know, the students' day-to-day within the school system and just make that, make it that much better and easier for them and the learning environment and also, you know, to reduce those class sizes.
And one of the questions that came up was, is this enough? I think unanimously, everybody said probably not. If we keep adding 200 kids a year to the school system, we're gonna have to add another addition pretty soon.
Right. I think in the school department, we'd be happy to ask for five million, six million, 10 million dollars, right? But we also know that there are limits to what we can ask from a financial standpoint. So this is, I think, a good ask for, from a budgetary standpoint, and it has a strong positive effect for the students.
And there's still, I mean, originally, you were gonna put half of it at Brookside, half at Memorial.
That is correct, yes. And then looking at the amount of infrastructure you would have to do at Memorial, and then the same amount of infrastructure you would have to do at Brookside, it was simply, let's do all the, one infrastructural set of work at Brookside that helps to cut down that cost overall.
And the good news is, the day comes that we need more space. We still have the area at Memorial to build on.
Correct.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, I am a parent with a child at Memorial. Schools bursting at the seams, both the elementary schools are. And the conversations we've had, which I think is pretty cool about what you're doing here, a little bit of shifting will happen too, and it'll really benefit all the elementary school children.
Correct, yes. So obviously, with more space, we're, we'll allow for more students to go to Brookside. So students that are kind of within that walking zone to Brookside that may right now be districted to Memorial, that district line would change a little bit, and we'd bring those, those students over to Brookside.
But let's keep it in perspective. It's 500 yards.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like, you know, when you heard of busing in Boston where it's going miles and, from Memorial to Brookside, it's a few hundred yards.
And when you look at it and you look at what the enrollment has become in Milford, and I was talking with someone, and when we built Woodland, the MSBA, there was a square footage equation to figure out when we built Woodland for how big each janitorial closet was gonna be, how big each gym was gonna be depending on the kids. If you actually apply that equation, we shouldn't be doing additions. We should actually, there should be another whole elementary school for this town. So I wanna compliment, like, the school committee for, you know, not going that route because to me, that's not an option financially. But to do something like this is something that's needed because, like I said, if you do the equation and do the math, I mean, we technically need another elementary.
Kathy, don't listen to that.
Yes, exactly. And that's why I'm glad that they didn't.
Okay, Number Five. This one is quasi. It's the AC unit at the library. When we look at, we had a failure of the AC and we had to fix it. It's simple. Well, it didn't fail. The cooling feed was going to fail. Spent $9,100 to repair it and Sue Edmonds took it out of her maintenance budget. And now we have to replenish it because it wasn't budgeted. But without it, we ran a real risk of not having AC.
That's right. And it was the dead of summer when we got the information. We got the emails. We saw pictures. You could see all the pipe, the pipe had separated from the building. I mean, what are your choices besides shutting the library down in the middle of the summer or just fix the thing and make it right here? So that's what this is doing.
Number Six.
Number Six is really not financial, but it's, it's cultural, really. I mean, it's about a zoning amendment that's about some murals in town. So beautifying town through some artwork on the side of some buildings. So really not a financial, but I think it's something people will see around town if this goes through.
And this is part of what Chris mentioned, that we've been asked to give our opinion on non-financial articles also. Kind of plays back to the description of the FinCom, the most influential powerless people in town hall.
Yeah, I think if you look at what the Cultural Council has done over the last couple of years, you know, with the picnic tables and then the, most recently, the trash receptacles. I mean, certainly, they have their eye on, on the town and they're doing great things and they're, they're making it colorful.
Okay. Family Services Unit, Number Seven, $260,000.
We had the deputy chief into our meeting to discuss this. And it was a very enlightening conversation. He let us know about all the services that Milford had been providing for families and people with substance abuse issues or abuse issues and that type of stuff for years and years in Milford, that unfortunately, because of grants falling off the table, these services have gone away. And from his description and, you know, just from hearing personal experience of other stories, these are some services that we should be providing to our residents of Milford. It's also services that I think are also preventative from having more severe things like, you know, more police interaction with, with people and stopping arrests and that type of stuff. So this is a, is a $260,000 program, but it's also, it's also in bed with a federal grant, which I think is a very important thing for people to understand, that it isn't just Milford money. We're also doing it hand-in-hand with a, with a federal grant to help provide these programs to people. And as he mentioned, highly needed in this town and I'm, and I'm highly supportive of this.
The $260,000 is the opioid money that was already put into our general fund. The grant will come in and Robbie was clear that if he doesn't get the half million dollar grant, he's not gonna go buy the van and hire the people. He's not gonna do all that. But it really is something, when you think about it, if you have somebody that needs to be transported, you gotta take a cruiser offline. You gotta call an active police cruiser to come down and get him. And not necessarily the best use of that resource. And having people who can deal with mental illness issues is just a good thing for the town.
Absolutely.
Number Eight, the Police Station Surveillance System, $140,000.
So, you know, really, when you look at this one, it's $140,000 and if you picture the police department, there's obviously, obviously gonna be, you know, AV systems around so they can do recording for a whole bunch of reasons. Ours is just really old and it's out of date and it's time to be replaced and updated to stay really in compliance with the needs and modernized. I mean, we've all seen how much technology's advanced and it's just time to keep up.
And this is the system that provides evidence to the court. So having it not be optimum really makes no sense. You know, people will say, I can buy a ring or a surveillance system for $29.99 at BJ's. Why are you spending 140 grand? It's the quality. It's the redundancy. It's all the pieces that go in to having a compliant system. Okay, if we look at Number Nine, 56 Lawrence Street.
Yeah, this is, this is a case of a property, excuse me, that at this point is, is gone too far and it needs to be taken care of. The Board of Health has spent numerous times at the property communicating with the owner about taking care of the property and bringing it back to what can be considered good standing. Unfortunately, the owner is not doing that. With this case, the Board of Health would like to demolish the property. It's a cost of $50,000 at most. A lot of times, the Highway Department will be able to take care of this. And this is $50,000 that we're spending to, to take this property down for a safety and health reason that we will, in the end,
Get back.
Get back, exactly. Because a lien will be put on the property for whatever the amount is for the takedown of the property.
And the dirt is worth more than 50.
Absolutely.
If you eliminated everything, just the lot itself.
Probably worth more with the thing taken down.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, Police Radios, Number Eleven, $120,000.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, we know the police department needs radios. They're mobile. They're out and about. It's not rocket science. But when we spent time with them and actually listened to some recordings of what the transmissions sound like, it was really pretty stunning. I mean, what was incredible about it was the, the recording we heard was, I think it was from a Leva, like in front of a Levas. And he played it for us and I had no idea what, what went on. I had absolutely no idea.
It sounded like my 16-year-old son. I didn't understand a word he said.
And, you know, you think, that's obviously pretty problematic for the police. But the other side of it was, especially as we, as we talked about it and got a little bit more educated, you know, there's a couple different dimensions to it. You know, one of it, one of them is when there's, a situation has been diffused, that you're asking other cars to stand down and not race across town at 100 miles an hour. And if you can't get that transmission out, you can't call for help, you can't stop help from coming, we need to replace the radios and update them. It's pretty obvious when you spend some time with them and listen to what they're working with.
But Robbie could listen to the Franklin Fire Department on his radio.
That was funny. There is this more powerful. They're, they've updated. And what's happening is the Franklin Fire Department is actually overwhelming our system and coming through more clearly on our feed.
Yeah, officer in need. Well, we're sending a truck to Franklin to put out the fire.
So, you know, everybody on the Finance Committee, I'm quite confident, really wants to make sure that police and fire have the equipment that they need. Anybody who's serving the town like that has the equipment they need to be safe and keep us safe.
Number Twelve, Property Appraisals.
Whenever a property is appraised, the taxpayer is allowed to question the appraisal. In each case, obviously, that the taxpayer questions it, there's sometimes litigation, lawyers get involved on what exactly is the value of the property and what it should be the fair amount of tax paid. The assessor's office has very large cases for very large parcels of property that can be substantial amount of money to the town that could go either way. Could either be a loss to the community or a great gain to the community in taxpayer revenue. When these legal things come up, we do need representation. This amount of money that we funded a couple of years ago for this representation is, to me, it's a great investment because to lose just a couple of these cases more than pays what the legal representation is.
Well, we put in 25.
Yeah.
We still got 19.
Yeah.
They're asking for another 25 to go forward. One case is 75.
Exactly. Yep.
And you gotta believe that the owner is gonna have lawyers who are gonna do research because they stand to save $75,000.
Per year.
Per year. So I didn't think there was any questions from the FinCom.
No, and Jen does a great job in that office to stay right on top of that.
Thirteen and fourteen, Old Cedar Street, behind Wendy's.
It's Old Cedar Street. This is really about changing an old Cedar Street. It's a concept that I was introduced to recently, but it's really, you know, a right-of-way for a road that kind of goes towards the bike path, you know, towards 495 from Dilla Street kind of behind Wendy's. This proposal, thirteen or fourteen in combination, it kind of gets rid of, the first part gets rid of the old right-of-way. The second one moves that right-of-way, you know, behind Wendy's a little bit more. And this is really an authorization to do that. The purpose of that would be for development. So it would bring some business into town. What's, I don't think it's actually part of the article, but the spirit of this or the intention of this is, there's a developer that wants to put in some storage units back in there. So this is really about trying to get that right-of-way in for the roads, adjust that. And it's really, for everybody, it's off of Dilla, heading behind Wendy's and that 85 kind of strip back in there.
It's like 600 storage units.
Yeah, that seems big from my recollection of the space, but when you drive by, you know, maybe I'm not paying attention to how much land is in there. Maybe there's a little more wooded area than I'm thinking about. But I know it is an access way to the, to the bike path and that's important to me and other members. And the developers, the attorney came before us last night and described that they were committed to making sure that that access to the bike path was preserved.
We look at Number Fifteen, two commercial lawn mowers. And it's always amazing when you say $43,000. Lowe's has them on sale for $199.
Yeah, these aren't John Deere's that you're gonna do the backyard with. The Parks Department, obviously, one of their main focuses is to maintain our fields. And to maintain our fields, we need lawn mowers. Obviously, they're industrial lawn mowers. Theirs have come into disrepair in which they can't even function anymore. They've done the due diligence of putting these on their five-year plan. They've been vetted by the Capitol Committee and it is time for them to be repaired.
And one of them has actually been cannibalized for parts to Band-Aid the other. Okay. One question that's come up is the library elevator. Article Sixteen. Originally, we had thought we could get away with $71,000. The other night, we were told that the prices, the bids have been updated and it was gonna be in the $78,000 to $80,000 range. And this morning, I was told it could be as high as 120. And that if it is that high, there'll be a considerable momentum put to saying, whoa. The Capitol Committee vetted this at 70. If it's gonna be a buck 20, maybe we should wait till spring or next fall to do this.
Yeah, it makes sense. Whenever you have the number shifting, we wanna make sure we know what we've got. I mean, the flip side of this that we'll all be mindful of, of course, is, you know, a library, the library is obviously a treasured resource in town and an elevator is really important for access and we need that to be safe. So we'll make sure that we're asking those questions as we dig into that a little bit more. Does this evolve? What, I think this is really just about the controls, the last I heard. I know there was some updates today. Still a little bit fluid, but this isn't about the actual physical carriage or box of the elevator.
And the cabin, we had said you could put off when it was 70, but if it's gonna be a buck 20, or maybe you do it all at once. We have.
Sure.
And that's the reason that the question's coming up, saying, maybe you should pass it over if it's gonna be that much money because we'll look at it with different options. The next one. Let's see. Who on the school committee should talk about putting lights on the softball field?
So this has been on our capital plan. What we did is we moved it up one year because of what, as we'll discuss later on, is the replacement of the turf surface at the high school along with the track. So what we did is with the amount of equipment that will be within that area, we felt it would be best to utilize that kind of where things are being shut down, just to look at the softball or to propose with the softball field getting their lights. So again, we can tie into the main electrical that is right now servicing the turf field and be able to utilize that to bring it over to the softball field. So again, it just made good sense to, since that area's going to be, in a sense, torn up a little bit, to be able to utilize that ability to bring power over.
Torn up a little bit. That's like saying Hiroshima was an annoyance to the afternoon tea?
Well, we're not taking down the stands and the trees that surround it.
But no, it makes sense because although they say there won't be any damage, you never know.
Yep. So again, it was, we've been planning for this. We just felt that this is a good, good planning time to do this.
Number Eighteen, changing the pre-town meeting meeting rules.
What I believe this one's about, you know, from our town meeting study improvement committee, they wanna change some of the verbiage, but I think what it's really about is trying to make sure that, or trying to get away from that pre-town meeting, meeting, or that forum that they would hold ahead of time to kind of go through the articles. The attendance is really low. And the last few times they tried to do it, they really didn't have enough people to, to, to hold those forums. So I think they're backing away from that.
I think that's very positive because it came about because town meeting members weren't getting enough information. So Reno and the crew put together a forum where they could ask questions. And candidly, it shamed us into updating our reports. I mean, now every article that comes before the FinCom Capitol Committee is on the website at least a month ahead. So they're getting both the positive and the negative sides. We have this show, there's other forums. So I think it's very positive that town meeting members are feeling that they're getting enough information. And if they stop getting it, I'm sure it'll come right back. Electric upgrades to the, to the Utes.
This is a phase project, to be honest with you, that we had been talking about for the Youth Commission. There's been electrical improvements going on within the building. This is, I wanna say Phase Three, which is the final phase of the electrical improvements. It's $10,000 and basically, it's just commits to something, no, excuse me, this just follows through with a commitment that we made three years ago for the improvements within the facility.
We've been improving the items in the basement and, like everything, you keep adding stuff and all of a sudden, you realize, you got extension cords plugged into extension cords. Not that they do, but you just run out of power. And $10,000 seems like a huge amount, but for commercial electric, unfortunately, it doesn't go as far as it used to. Zoning bylaw change concerning signs.
It's the Downtown Revitalization Committee is putting this forward. It's a zoning change around signs. And, you know, there's an awful lot of legal language in there that we all sort of looked at each other and said, what exactly does this mean? And got a little bit of help with, with that. But the spirit of this is really just to put some regulations around signs downtown. Drive some consistency, you know, in appearance of downtown. Feels like it's a good idea. I'm not an expert on signs or the exact number of feet away from a sign that is right or wrong, but I think that this is kind of well-intended to bring some consistency. And, you know, downtown is, you know, that's, that's the heart of the town, right? And trying to, trying to beautify is, you know, makes a lot of sense.
Well, when you think about it, you don't want somebody renting a storefront to just put a sign, to make the whole storefront a sign. You also, this talks about now making sure that the signs, God forbid, I'm gonna say this, somebody will get insulted, that are aesthetically pleasing. You can't just write on the sign, eat at Brad's Diner. So it has to be something that looks reasonable, professionally made, and it can only be 35%, I think it was, of the total window size.
I think so. Yes, not to exceed 35%.
Backhoe. This is one of Scotty's toys for $200,000.
Yeah. Unfortunately, whenever you replace a, any of the equipment at the Highway Department, it's a sizable capital expenditure because they're big toys. This one happens to be a backhoe. It's $260,000. This is another one where, you know, he's putting, you know, glue and bubble gum and every duct tape and everything to it to allow the thing to go longer and longer. But unfortunately, it's finally put its white flag up and surrendered. This is something that, you know, Scotty has planned well for and it is on the capital plan. And he did everything right on the five-year plan and the Capitol Committee looked at it and has approved it.
He actually pushed it out a year already. You know, I mean, that's one thing that you gotta tip your hat to our department heads. It's not just, oh, we had that budgeted, we're gonna spend it. When they come in and say, can I have it this year? And we think, can you wait? Like this year, with $7 million worth of capital, we had to ask a bunch of people to push off things for a year and then beg the school committee to remember that we're pushing off other people. So next year, the school committee's gotta go easy. But it all works when people get together. You know, our strongest, our strongest asset are the department heads and the school committees and the committees who just don't look out for themselves. They understand that a lot of people are living on 1,500, 1,800 a year social security, I mean, a month, that built this town. So, okay, next one. Article Twenty Two, the library contract hasn't been negotiated, so we don't know how much we'll pay for funding on that. Article Twenty Three, painting.
Painting. This is Phase Two of two for, at Stacy Middle School. So a year ago, the same amount for $200,000, we went to town meeting. We asked for that amount of money, was approved. And so now we're looking for Phase Two. So again, Stacy Middle School, just trying to stay up with the upkeep, keep it nice and new-looking. You know, when the kids are transitioning from Woodland Elementary School, which is a far newer building, right, we're trying to kind of keep that experience going and the look within the school. So it's actually been a really great thing because even some of the teachers have taken the initiative to paint their own classrooms because they see how much enhancement it has bringing to the building. So again, we just wanna continue on that, that improvement within the walls of Stacy Middle School.
Article Twenty Four, the doggies.
Yeah, it's a $20,000 project for the animal control building. I'll confess, I have never set foot in that building in my life, but the pictures that I've seen have shown that it looks like it's probably all original and it needs, it needs $20,000 worth of work because it looks in disrepair or hanging on for dear life is probably the way I'd
You never want to set foot. I've been there once because my quarter hounder, no cheese, disappeared off our backyard and somebody found the dog, took him to the kennel, and then I had to go fetch the dog. So you hope it's one of these things like Fire Department, Police Department, that you never will use. But this is $20,000 to update the kennels. 25 is more doggies. And again, that's no money for the town, but that's...
Yeah. This is more directed at, at commercial kennels. And basically, that's to bring our town in line with, I guess, many of the other towns in the Commonwealth requiring certain square footage for each individual dog enclosure. So really, there wasn't much to talk about on this, to be honest with you.
Now, the next article, Twenty Six, hats off to Zach, Chris, and the financial team. Because when we went to buy the water company, we estimated a certain amount of money and we spent almost $2 million less. So now they've turned around here and said, there's no reason to have this money sitting out there saying we could borrow it if we want to. It's like your credit card. If you put on an extension, whether you use it or not, it still counts against your credit. So this just eliminates the ability to borrow two million, a little under $2 million. Twenty Seven and Twenty Eight. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight are contracts that haven't been closed, that's clerical and sewer. And twenty-nine. Is military pay or pay for people who are going to the military.
Yeah, I felt, actually felt uh really strongly about this one. This one was um for the first forty days. Um after one of our employees is called into active duty. Without this, they are only getting their pay from um their active duty. What this will allow is that the town of Milford will now provide whatever uh amount needs to be added to their active duty pay. In order for our employees to be able to take home their actual one hundred percent pay, to make them whole, as we like to say. Uh and to me, for someone, especially one of our town workers, not especially, anyone, excuse me, to do service in our military. For them to take home the pay that they outright deserve, um I think was important. And it's not forever, and I would have voted for that too. But it's just for the thirty, first forty days of their service.
And if you think through it, they're gonna get a stipend, some nominal amount. For going into the military and defending us. For the first forty days, we would give them their full pay and they get that little stipend. Now, I like the idea because if you're going away for a month or two, there's certain things you gotta take care of. So you know, people who argue, well, they double dip, they get a pittance on top of a little bit. Yeah, well, women, if you were leaving your family for a month or two. You know, there's things like babysitting after school, there's all that extra expense. That that little bit extra for the first forty days, yeah, they're getting a little bit more than their salary. But they're covering their expenses. And as Chris says, anybody's gonna put their life on the line for me? I think I owe them.
Absolutely.
Town accountant. Adjustment for his contract.
So you know, I think it's been a conversation in several town meetings recently, you know, it was really talking about, you know, just how do we pay? You know, how how is our pay around in our town for employees? How does that compare to the market in surrounding towns? There's been compensation study work. We've seen articles about this before. Um this one is for the town accountant um for a raise for the town accountant to bring them to a competitive uh. Competitive, market competitive salary.
There's only so much guilt you can put on Brownie. To say, everybody around you is making more, every town. But we want you to stay in Milford because you really do help us out a lot. This just makes it fair. You know, it's not a huge increase. This twelve thousand dollars goes all the way back and all the way till next July. And you know, anybody who's worked with the man, he's got a great family, Milford dedicated family. And he's just been absolutely super.
Oh, fantastic job. Yep.
So. Dump truck for the parks department.
It's a broken record. Uh this is another one of our uh our departments that have, obviously, they need equipment that they need to purchase. Um same thing vetted by the capital committee. They planned on it. It was budgeted uh for this. So um in this particular case, uh it is not even a choice because the the vehicle won't pass inspection.
Won't pass things.
So that kind of forces your hand a little bit, but even if it didn't, uh they did the right things by putting it on um the capital plan.
This was the old sewer truck. And I know it raised questions as to why does the parks department need a sewer truck? No, it came from the sewer department. It had already reached the end of its life at the sewer department. So we gave it to parks. And eventually, as you said, now it's at a point where that dog won't hunt anymore. Seventy-one thousand, which compared to most dump trucks, we're pretty happy with that. Here we go. Let's see, who should talk about resurfacing?
Chris Brandt, you wanna take that? Uh so yeah, again, this is uh another request from the Milford School Department. And looking to replace our our turf field and track surface. It was um, the last time it was installed was twelve years ago with a lifespan of ten years. So we've gotten two extra years out of it, but it's just like any carpet, you know, that's been run on and and used and abused. By everybody within our, within our community. Um you know, it's just time to replace it and 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 freshen it back up. And I think that the town needs to look at it that this is a um a facility that is used not but just by the high school, but by many youth groups. Uh through and and many other. And citizens that are out there walking our track. So you know, certainly, it's a um, you know, it it's a, it's a. Place where everybody can utilize its.
Well, I remember when we first put it in.
For value.
People saying, we're gonna save all this money because we don't have to cut the grass. And then we said, no, you're not gonna save anything. But what you're gonna get out of it is two and a half field uses. Because when it rains, when the weather's bad, you can't let people use the grass field because they rip it up. Here with the artificial turf, you let it go an hour and it drains off and off you go.
You know, the three of us I know have school age children, so we see it all the time that, you know, I'm picking my kid up at the Milford High School field at nine, nine-thirty at night. You know, it's it's and 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 as they're getting off, someone else is still getting on. And you can't do that on a grass field, but you don't give it that much use as well as the the ability with the lights, which is gonna be great for the softball field. Hand in hand, that you can use fields which we desperately need in this town over and over and over again. Without worrying about that, oh wow, if we do this, then guess what? The football team on Friday night is, before they even tear it up, it's gonna be torn up by the lacrosse league, soccer league, all that type of stuff. So. You know, I I think it's.
The only bad part of this is the price went up to a million dollars.
Correct, yeah. Obviously, inflation had an effect on this uh warrant article. Um you know, the price did go up a little bit.
The supply chain bid us on this one. But again, the amount of use it gets, you know, you you can't fault it. It's held up its end and even two more years past where we thought it would go. Now, we look at the salt shed.
Salt shed.
We just did sixty thousand and all of a sudden people are saying, why are we doing five hundred fifty to replace the roof?
Well, that's right. You know, we uh, we did have an article um and when the repairs started, you people, contractors take a look and they realize. That you know, salt's highly corrosive and it really had just ruined the the building. And just a couple of patches that we had in mind were just not feasible. It was, the structure was just not gonna hold up. So uh what's gonna happen now is we're gonna have one of those that if you, it it might, you might have to think about it to see one. But it's really more of like a tent-like structure that is actually pretty common. Um and as you drive around, you'll start to see them and notice them. Um but it's a cement base with a canopy sort of tent um with probably like a metal frame.
Quonset hut.
Yeah, yeah, but it's got, it's got like a white sort of metal, kind of canvas over that Quonset hut metal frame um with a cement base around it. It's it's actually, they're pretty modern, you see them all around. And I would say if you, if you drive down to to the, look at the actual salt barn we have right now. You won't have a lot of suspicion about whether or not we could get a few more years out of it. I I took a drive down myself when I was down that way and said, well, let's see this thing and. Yeah, it's it's due, it's due.
And the price tag is sixty thousand less because we already allocated sixty thousand. It's still gonna be five hundred fifty thousand dollars to put a new one in. And yeah, if you drive on the Mass Pike, you see the state Quonset hut. Now, it's a little bit bigger than what we have. Police tasers. For eighty-three thousand dollars. No, women.
Yeah.
I think it's a little more than.
No, no, because we're doing it over five years.
It's two hundred thousand dollars but um total, but.
It's twenty-six thousand the first year. That's what I was getting confused at. It's no more, no less if you space it out over five years. Because we asked um the deputy chief, well, if we paid it all upfront, do we get a discount? No. Cause no towns have the money to pay it upfront. Okay, we'll do it over five years. So it's twenty-six thousand, but people have to understand, this is the nose of the camel. You you're really voting on two hundred thousand dollars to replace tasers.
And you know, tasers, I know people didn't know this and I didn't know. I mean, they have expiration dates. I mean, it's like milk. I mean, you it only gonna be good for so long, uh in which that expiration date brings. To it legality issues that the company will no longer back it, it'll no longer guarantee that it will fire, it will no longer guarantee that it won't harm someone. After that, once it reaches that date. So unfortunately, once a taser reaches that date, we can't use them because of the liability. And and obviously, we, it it's important for us that our police officers are safe. It's also important to know that they have an ability to uh take down a suspect without using lethal force and be able to use something like this. So all around, this was a, you know, a good purchase for the criminals and for the cops.
You don't want the cop aiming a taser going.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now he's got two choi- or she's got two choices. You know, either harm themselves or the taser doesn't work. You've got a different gun that has to be used. So this will put back in, we'll get all the tasers upfront. And it's kind of like a finance program, but I want town meeting members to understand, this was like the computers we bought for the police. Where it was a hundred thousand dollar commitment, thirty thousand a year. So this is two hundred thousand over four years. But once we start, you can't decide, love of mine, we're not gonna pay you for the tasers. Air cylinders, eighty-three thousand.
You know, I I think the thinking on the air cylinders is a lot like the tasers. They have a useful life and they're really important to everybody's safety. So the fire department, when they go into a fire, needs to have, you know, the air tank on the back, we all know what that looks like. And they they have a useful life and it, we have a program where we need to replace them. Um they replace the expired ones or the old ones, and this is about replenishing it and making sure that our firefighters have have what they need to do the job safely. So it, you know, it's a lot like the tasers from that perspective of it's a piece of safety equipment that uh we need our first responders to have. And when they get old, we need to replace them to keep them safe so they can protect us.
I think that's simple. Truck number one for the highway department, two hundred fifty thousand.
Same thing, reached the end of its life, capital uh department ha- uh subcommittee has looked at it. It was planned for by the department, we were in favor.
Number thirty-seven, the engineering study for the collapsing drain pipe in the heights.
We've talked about this one a fair bit because there have been um a bunch of drainage projects around town over the years. And um you know, I think we were reminded after, you know, having a lot of conversations about these that, you know, the the town is really doing the right thing. Sometimes it's on on private property, but when you have drainage collapse, uh you you know, I think it's, you wanna fix this before it becomes a bigger problem in town. We've done a lot of brooks like this and this is the, a study in the Heights to to take a look at a drain, what is a thirty-six inch drain pipe that's, you know, in the process of collapsing.
Fifty feet that's been collapsing for years.
So it sounds like it's, it's probably gone on long enough and it's time to take a look at it. So this is just a survey to see what it would cost to replace it or really repair this thing.
Engineering study.
Yep.
And the question that always comes up is, do we have to do it if it's on private land? Technically, I believe the answer is no. But we've always done it because if you can imagine your home. Somebody walking up saying, remember the equity you used to have? It's gonna cost three, four hundred thousand dollars to fix that piece of the brook behind you and that's on you. Well, most people don't even have that in equity and if you tried to take it, God forbid, you empty their purses. So over the years, what was considered a twenty-five million dollar brook project, we've been nibbling. Then again, a lot of people will ask, well, why don't we just budget it and do it? The reason, at least that I've been told and made sense, is that the state is not gonna fund projects you already did. So every so many years, we get a grant, two million, three million, and we can do a section. If we fixed it all at once, state would say, well. ABC town needs the money more than you do because you already paid for it. So this will be seventy-five thousand, but again, this is not seventy-five thousand to correct four hundred fifty feet of pipe. This is seventy-five thousand, I understand what it's gonna cost to correct four hundred fifty feet of pipe. Remote town meetings, fifteen thousand.
Uh I mean, obviously, everyone knows the condition of 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 society with Zoom meetings and and and. We've even had to adjust to that on local politics and government. Uh town meeting obviously has been available to some people with um disabilities uh through Zoom, online. Uh that type of stuff. Uh there are cars involved in doing something like that. There are licensing that you have to do. Uh to pay to be able to provide uh these services. Um we have been absorbing the co- costs. Uh through various departments and that type of stuff for the past town meetings. Um unfortunately, now it's getting to the point where we are still providing these Zooms and uh the bill is coming up and this fifteen thousand dollars. Um it would be used specifically for uh allowing town meeting to uh continue to go on uh with remote access.
And it's not something that we can just buy the equipment. I mean. The audio equipment in town meeting, in town hall, I understand is failed. That we don't have a choice because up there in the summer where it gets extremely hot. I'm not sure, but I've been told that the equipment has deteriorated. So we have to rent sound equipment anyway. And then the question is, do we want to fund residents, the ability for residents? For whatever reason, to remote in. Now, we got an article coming up two from now. That the Attorney General has raised question. That uh Jerry Moody is going to try and get clarity. On the fact that the Attorney General initially, my understanding has told us that you have to prove you need remote access. So you gotta go get a doctor's note or something. And this really says, whether we need it or not. We're gonna do it for the benefit of our citizens. And fifteen grand's a lot of money, but on a hundred and forty-three million dollar spend, it's not a budget breaker. And we get down to transfer to stabilization, one point three six million dollars.
Well, yeah, this is one that we're always excited about, you know, as finance committee members, you know, because you really, you know, we're we're putting money away for um projects of the future. And it's, really speaks to the health of our financials that we can afford, you know, to do the upgrades of the uh the schools. We can um think about all the projects we just talked about here today. And it's over seven million dollars of spend, whether it's fields, it's lights, it's painting, it's trucks, it's lawnmowers, you name it, all the things that we just did. And we can still put away about one point four million dollars. Now, that one point four million dollars that we're putting away, um you know. I personally look at that and say, well, there's big projects coming. You know, there's a high school that's uh on the horizon. I don't, can't tell you when, the feasibility study is, you know, in front of us. We'll find out what the timing of that is when we find out. But when that day comes and we do a project of that scale, the 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 borrowing that it would take, the loan it would take in servicing the loan. Of a of a high school of the scale that we have, you look at that and say, well, gosh, like if we had to fund that out of the gate, you know, from our operating cash flow. Um right now, it would be, you know, a a huge tax increase to the town. And as I think about that, the opportunity here is to keep putting money away like we're doing. And of course, there would have to be an increase to taxes, this excess levy capacity that we have right now, the ability to raise taxes. Um that we have about five million dollars in reserve right now, we're gonna have to eat in that to deal with a project of this scale. But that wouldn't even be enough. And this, using the stabilization money that we're parking today gives us some room. So what you're doing is really saving some money so it takes sort of the the sting out of a big project that's coming. It it's still probably gonna sting when it comes. The taxpayers are gonna see a a big tax increase and we've been, you know, really fortunate that we're in a place where we're not taxing to the full capacity we can. Um but that also gives us the capacity to take on these big projects that are coming. So it's really important.
Now, a lot of people have no idea what excess levy capacity.
That's a good point. I rattled that one off.
You know, and it's free money.
No, no.
Excess levy capacity.
Yeah.
What excess levy capacity is, is that the state basically tells us what we can charge in taxes, okay? To keep it simple, the state of Massachusetts says that we can charge the town of Milford a hundred dollars. Right now, we're only charging them ninety-five, the taxpayers, we're only charging them ninety-five dollars, okay? Legally, we can tell them, hey, you owe me a hundred bucks. We're only telling them that they owe us ninety-five dollars, okay? That excess levy capacity and that ability that we could ask for another five dollars if we wanted to, I'm talking about millionaire, but I'm making, keeping it simple for discussion. That right there comes from us not spending everything that we need, that we can, excuse me. Projects that are properly financed, planned, uh budgets that are kept under control, okay? What we've done as a financial team, finance committee, school committee has said, listen, just because we can spend it. Doesn't mean we are gonna spend it. And I think the fiscal conservative policy that the town has had has said, listen. We can do with only spending ninety-five dollars this year. We don't need the full hundred. And you know, I, actually, you probably even heard it on camera and I think a couple of people caught attention when Zach brought up and. When Zach brought up and that our le- excess levy capacity was five million dollars, again, I laughed out loud, I snickered. Because, I mean, Al, you remember, remember with Mark?
Oh, good.
One point eight million dollars, are you insane? We can't do this, it's never sustainable. I mean, we thought we were out of our minds when we did that years ago. We can't do this. And to watch it just keep going up and, like I said, that excess levy capacity is taxes that we haven't told people. That they need to pay because you know what? We have our spending under control. And that's what that five million dollars shows the taxpayers.
And if you think about it, having five million of excess levy, it's eighty dollars a million. So we're saving four hundred dollars out of everybody's pocket.
Every year.
Every year. You know, the levy can go up two and a half percent, prop two and a half. Okay, so the levy goes up, but as Chris says, doesn't mean you gotta spend it. If you don't spend it, you don't tax it. And that's the whole idea. Now, there may be a year when we need to go and use the full levy. But until we need to, not want to. I mean, you could throw fifty million dollars in there and people could find ways of spending it. But you know, I'm pretty proud that when you think about it, I can't remember one project that we didn't do. That we needed to do because of funding. I mean, if anybody told me we were gonna spend sixty-one million dollars on an elementary school and absorb it into our normal budget. I would have asked them what narcotics are they using and why aren't they sharing it? But we did it. You know, when we originally put a million dollars towards the tax rate. Well, the next year you'll double hit people because you'll have to use it. Well, here we are at five. And I think that the idea is, if we need to spend it, it's there. But you gotta really need, because that five million is four hundred dollars of extra bills that you have to pay.
Like you say, think about senior center, think about uh a three and a half million dollar one, I mean, armory. Think about, you know, uh we bought a water company, think about uh we did a trail, think about we did a field, and we're gonna do a field a second time. Um we've done so many projects uh within this town, still, and sixty-three million dollar school. All those things with still having excess levy capacity. Like you said, it's not just not spending it. Cause you can not spend it and not provide the services. We're not spending it and providing the services, which is, that's the key.
So Chris, let me ask you a question. Some of the surrounding towns I know don't have this much capacity.
No.
What happens when you have no excess levy capacity and you've got a big bill coming?
Profanity, yeah. You you have no alternative. Your credit card is maxed out. You need to make the phone call to your town meeting members and say, listen, I know your credit card is maxed out, we want an extension. And basically, what they're saying to you is, you only told us you're gonna tax us this, we're allowing you to, and you need to do something, which is. Is that the taxpayers now need to say, listen, we're willing to to go deeper.
Prop two and a half.
Prop two and a half, yeah.
You sit there and say, I've increased my levy two and a half percent like the law allows. I've spent every dang penny of it. But I need to spend more.
They legally, you, us as a town cannot legally tax them one more dollar unless we go back to the taxpayers and say, listen, is it okay for us to tax you? And obviously, there has to be a justified reason, but as Al said, I will never be in favor of an override unless. Actually, I can't think of it unless, I really will not because I know that with the funding. Uh that we've done in the past with saving and everything else, I know that we can handle any project and we have up to this point.
So it's an important point, I'm glad we've spent a couple of minutes talking about it. This one point four million dollars we're squirreling away is more insurance against the things that that we're talking about that other towns have to go through. And it's it's really pretty incredible when you see what the town's able to accomplish and still be able to squirrel money away for projects that are coming. That's how you get ahead.
Well, think about it. When my daughter lived in Worcester, she had to use these little designer trash bags at three bucks apiece. If you needed to remove leaves, you had to buy Lowe's bags to get rid of lea- all of that is part of. Our tax base. We're already paying for that. Towns around us. I mean, this idea of, well, we won't increase the taxes, we'll increase the fees. I remember the guy that came in about the water removal, said you don't have to tax the residents, just make it a fee.
Chris, how much do you um, how much you guys charge for um busing, for kindergartners and everything?
Exactly, busing obviously is free, right? You know, sports are now free, right? Cause we're, we we decided that for the best interest of our community. We removed all of our sporting fees just to to help promote our, you know, after after school. Events and things of that nature, so yeah.
Yeah, like Brian said, other towns don't do that. I'm not pay- I'm not paying to have my trash picked up. It's, I'm just not doing it. Because in Milford, we're spoiled and we realize that as I pay my property taxes, you're gonna pick up my trash. You're gonna pick up my leaves.
Yeah, I was in Lion's Stop and Shop, there were Medway trash bags.
Medway, the designer trash bags.
Medway trash bags, so how funny is, you know, that that at a Milford store, Medway trash bags are being sold. But in in Milford, I can put out my two barrels, stuff them full, and at the end of the day when I come home from work.
Yeah, and I mean.
Everything's gone.
It, you can put out two barrels.
I just said a couple barrels.
You know, uh when it comes down to graduation parties or Christmas. We've all put an extra one there and they haven't seen a problem. You can put out, you know, one big ar- article, one couch, one. We get a lot for our money here. Before we forget, last article forty-one deals with remote. Access to the town meeting. That article may or may not be passed over, it depends what the attorney general says. But basically, that's the article that Jerry Moody got the letter on saying, you know, you're letting forty-three people. Remote in. Did they prove that they have to remote in? And we're trying to come back saying, well, why do they have to prove it? But that's an attorney general question. What happens is if the attorney general says, your meeting was invalid. Because people remoted in, well, the town meeting, the annual meeting is the salaries, the expenses. All of that would be in question. Article forty-one has this town meeting. Voting to ratify, to agree to everything they did three months ago. That way, if the attorney general comes back and says, no soup for you, you know, you can't do this. We still legally can pay people and do all that. Any last words for town meeting members and residents?
I encourage town meeting members to, if you have any questions, please go on the website. Um we've done a great job, I know you specifically have. I know Britain, your subcommittees in the schools. Uh go on the school website and the town website, uh take a look at all the projects that are being proposed. For town meeting, get the information on it, um and hopefully answer all the questions that you have, because we are spending a lot of money. Um and if a question wasn't answered here tonight, I know the question will be answered uh by the information that's up there.
And thank you all for all the time and energy you put in on the school committee, helping out the finance committee. Practicing for when you become chairman.
It's on camera now.
Yeah.
But as always, thank you for taking part in the Milford process. Because everybody who watches the show, volunteers their time. It's a little bit, but all those little bits add up, and that's why we're so physically healthy as a town. Go to the website, get all the information. If there's information missing. Let our town um manager, Rick Valani, know, and we'll get it to you because it's your money we're spending. And as always, thank you for joining. To our six loyal viewers, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight.